This is the nicest thing I've ever got. And I got it at the twenty four prints and I secretly like want to call them and be like, who is your provider?
This is my favorite.
You're proposing that to go under the other one.
They have eleven.
Alright, Wendy, whenever you're ready, let me know.
I'm ready.
No, you're good, we're waiting for when.
Does it let out walking without too much, because that's kind of nice.
It's like, it's silky and it's like. Ooh, that's a good one, too. I don't know, I just like it. But I don't know what it is.
It comes out, you do write fast.
Yeah, yeah.
This, the problem is, it is a little bit.
It's a little narrow.
I like the narrow, but if I'm writing for too long, it's also. So, which way? I typically take them, in less notes, I don't come, get them quickly.
Hey, Mike, sundown approaches for, for Brew Fest sound good?
Their, that weekend is usually one of the band members' overrated birthdays.
Of the? Of sundown approaches?
Yeah.
Okay. Elizabeth Weber, you know her? Do you know her?
She owns La Frontera, she's friends with them.
She, she won the doctor. I would just say, do a friend of a friend if we could do it.
I will call the city council of the city of Dunsmere, regular meeting on April twentieth, twenty twenty-three to order. We will stand and go for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Wendy, whenever you're ready, we'll do roll call.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember Claireno.
Present.
Councilmember Brian.
Present.
And Mayor Luquezi.
Present, thank you. We'll move right away into our special presentation announcements. And we have Dan, is it Evers or Evers?
Evers.
Evers, okay, Evers, thank you. So we have Dan Evers with the Rainforest Art Project, Dunsmere Underpass Project. And so we just asked that you go up to one of the microphones because we do have people on Zoom who may want to hear what you have to say. Is that okay?
Right up to.
Yep, the podium probably, yeah.
I know you have your art over here, so I wasn't sure if we had a mic for you over there. And then if.
Oh, that, the microphone turned around, there we go. Thank you.
Perfect.
What would be the best way to put that so it can be seen online?
I think, I think Blake's working on that one.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much for having me, thank you, council and audience. A pleasure to be in Dunsmere, I've been coming up here a good part of my life since my early teens and I love the town and I, I think that there's one obvious area that needs a lot of help in the town. It's kind of interesting because it's.
One, one thing, Cheryl, if you're gonna have conversations, could you please have them in the hallway? Thank you, I apologize, but I did.
Yeah, I drove through the town a while back because we're working with Durham Elementary School, Durham, Dunsmere Elementary School, we work with them too. Dunsmere Elementary School, and I go back through that tunnel and look at it and I go, whoa, something needs to be done here. And talking to the principal, Susan, I says, is there any place in this town where you would like to see some improvement? And then she immediately, without any prompting, said, yeah, the tunnel. And the same thing when I talked to Dustin, that's what came up when I asked him if there was an area. So what's happening is there's a Clean California grant that's coming out that we want to apply for, that we're working on for your city, that if you, you care to follow through with it, we're helping format it for you, to try and get the money to do it. Little bit about my background, when I was a kid, I was very poor academically and very unathletic and uncoordinated, but I could work with my hands and that transformed my life, my ability to go to the shop and turn bowls on the lathe and to make jewelry out of abalone shells. And I sold those to parents all over the community where, while other kids were playing baseball. And I, I have absolutely no regrets for my lack of coordination because I discovered something that I loved, it's a passion for my entire life. And when I sold, I, I built a business, starting when I was a senior at Chico State, from a two-car garage into a national, an international business, sold through every Home Depot, we had factories. And the, the thing that enabled me to get there was that epiphanal moment of I discovering what I could do with my hands. And there are so many kids that will never make this discovery because the opportunities aren't there. So we started out, I sold my business, moved to San Diego, right into the infamous Barrio Logan, and started working with underserved kids in that community. We built it up around there, we worked with almost all the schools in the San Diego area and over in the Imperial Valley and communities like Callexico, Brawley, Barstow, and very, very underserved communities. So what we're doing here is looking at the opportunity and what we, the first thing we look at is, is do we have a good city and a, and a enlightened city management that can appreciate the opportunities? Do we have a good school that we can work with and we start it with? And we expect ultimately to be able to work with every school. So let's just go through real quickly some of the projects that we've worked on.
You're doing too many things, Blake.
There goes. Oh, there we go. Okay, this is a sculptural title that we did, it's forty thousand stones from all over the world, all natural stones, they were all donated by a very famous artist for this project. And we sculpted them, the kids put them all on. That's their treasured mascot. And here it is being installed in some of the other mosaics. This is a traditional pavement, done with small team, there's obviously thousands of pieces in that. You know, beautiful, it's an entry for a school. This is maybe the Iguana that, with hammered copper mosaic, you can see all the transitions of the colors, emblem, glass eyes. Kaiser Permanente Hospital, where we worked with all of their cancer ward, or cancer kids involving them in the arts because it's incredibly therapeutic to break the cycle of fear with parents and their family who worked with San Diego, so that program is still going very strong.
Well done, dude.
Thank you. And this is the Brady Children's Hospital in San Diego where we did the Recovery Garden outside in ICU. This is a park in Brawley, Alastro Park, that's, the Imperial Valley got virtually no sculpture, hardly any art whatsoever. And so when we went in there, now that we've got two sculpture parks, we've got all kinds, I mean, virtually hundreds of people, it's transformed the community. The mayor called me a while back and he says, we've got of, of the city of Imperial, who says, we now got two sushi places in town, we never agreed that we'd have them. And they credited the, the public art for that, for them wanting to be there. Again, Alastro Park, where we took the indigenous animals and created the sculptures of them. So we use, once again, using the natural stones. This is up in Paradise, where we're invited to work with in Mute County by the County Office of Education Superintendent to come and work with their kids to help them with the trauma after that tragic campfire. So we've been there ever since, working with them, we've built egos and medallions for all the schools involving the kids in the art projects and now we're working on wonderful murals and stuff for them. Another school, Paradise Children's Community Charter, the kids just love it. They, they own this, it's amazing how incredible the, the power of this whole ownership process is and the pride that they take in it. There's Gavin Gibson up there who came to one of our workshops and actually helped put some pieces down with the kids for Paradise Ridge Elementary School. By the way, in that school, virtually every kid lost their home, every teacher lost their home. Once again, Paradise, that's the correctional school. Alternative, and then large mosaics, eagle there, one of the schools. We have a furniture program where the kids are helping create really wonderful furniture in order to, once again, have that experience, that, that epiphany, that moment of discovery that they can create things with their hands for their schools. And that's all black, all the kid, here you can see the kids working on the lasers and that's, it's magic to me how lasers work, it's really magic, they are totally mystified. What we face in our public schools is not a crisis of format scores, we face a crisis of inspiration. And that lack of inspiration is reflecting in our homeless populations, our drug abuse and all these social ills that we have. Because people that love themselves, people that love their craft, people that are inspired, they will not turn to those alternatives, die off alternatives. More furniture that we get with the eagle coming into the river and a beautiful wall in her own bench. And this is a nine-foot eagle, they love it. We, I do basic sculpture, get it going and then the kids are involved in placing all the, all the tiles on it. That one took us a year during, a year and a half, I think, during COVID, but it was wonderful, wonderful therapy for these kids. Working on the eagle. Again, there's the school principal, the kids working on the eagle. Stained glass, I've done it for years in my former life, and we do this with the kids, where the kids will design the glass and then we'll create stained glass accents in schools, for school library. Another school, mosaic murals all through there. This is, our kids helped on, this one is the site of a, of the Hotel Diamond in Chico, if you go by there, you can see this, it's a depiction of Upper Ridwell Park and the salmon living over the falls, all done in three-dimensional mosaic. This is a project we've got going with Redding, this is at Caldwell Park, with the diroic glass, goes up, it's nearly twenty-foot tall, all his sculpture, this is the base of it. And, yeah. This is probably the largest mosaic mural in the country going on right now, it's over six hundred feet long and it's sixty separate murals. We've got, we're doing it for three years, and here's the salmon and the sturgeon. And they'll go with the sets all along, all from the hatchery down by the river in Orville, all the way to the top of the Hill of Grand Avenue. This is more projects we've got going with Orville, where we're doing the archway, Welcome to the City, and the kids will be doing that, the kids at the Orville High School will be sculpting the, the eaglets on the top there. And this is a sculpture that we're doing of Ishi, that'll be life-size in bronze, where he, that moment of desolation where he realizes he's the only, one of his tribe that's left and he could ask to honor that, and so we'll be doing that. Okay, so here's what we're dealing with now, we're dealing with a terribly ugly, you know, I know that there's efforts to paint you, paint it, and so there's multiple clothes of paint, everything on there. And what our proposal is, is to, the tile, yeah, is to do very large, this, this one's a salmon.
They're, they're.
That one's a salmon. And that one's a sample for the wall that you did in Orville. And this is, but you can see the detail and everything in it. So the point is, when we work with kids.
Hey, Dan.
We have very high expectations.
Go back to the mic. You're very good at projecting, but I want to make sure everybody on, on here can hear you.
When we work with kids, that we have high expectation, and it's not juvenile art. And we have nothing against that, where every kid does a tile and they put them on a wall and that's what makes a patchwork. It's just not the what we find inspiring and the what we expect from our kids. So we work with professional, very, very talented artists to create spectacular things that adults and everybody will enjoy. So what we're proposing is to use a, what they call a subway tile. And I just interject a little thing here, is that in the past, the New York subway has always been a dreaded place and everybody avoided, and I think this is the perfect analogy. And they started doing mosaics in there, they started a mosaic project about fifteen years ago, and now it's actually a destination. And so we can take the worst eyesore in the town, which I, I don't know if that's you, and I was thinking with it, I, it's so far from my survey that it is, and we can turn it into something that is a genuine asset through using mosaic and kids are, kids will all take ownership in. We would, over the period of this, if we give the grant, it wouldn't be until twenty twenty-six that we would have to be completed, we'd be able to have every kid in the town work on it through the schools. The subway tile, I'm sorry, I'm sorry again, the subway tile is porcelain, it's extremely hard, and you see it through here. And what we'll be doing is using water jet technology to cut the shapes out of the white tile, porcelain tile, and then we'll inset the mosaics in there. So and the mosaics will be done in sections that will be manageable so we can take them to the school and run inside of them. So, yeah, that, that would be, that would be the plan and it would take, I mean, it's a very ambitious project, so let's see if we, is that the end? Yeah, just, just some ideas, and you can see here from the glass that, especially the rainbow trout, they do beautiful tiles that'll be available to us to do this. And this is all gonna be extremely durable, it's washable with, you know, with a power washer and stuff so we can keep any road grit off of it. And it, it will last forever down there. See if there's another one, I think, that might be it.
I think that's it, yeah.
Okay, so, so I wanted to, as part of this process, I've talked with Susan and Dustin and virtually nobody else, so any questions I would like to field and.
So I'll start down the line and we'll go with Councilmember Kaiser and then Councilmember Deutsch.
Okay, yes, sir.
Where'd we find this guy?
You found out.
Okay, well, I commend you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
I commend, I commend you. I'm, I'm originally from San Diego.
Oh, are you?
I know you're working, but I had no idea how it evolved.
Thank you.
For that, I commend you. I think that's pretty awesome to get the kids involved. I, I do have a couple of concerns though, sir. I wanted to paint this bridge a few years ago, I had this big push and I had a city manager, I had a bunch of people, we all got into it. And Caltrans came along. I'm, I'm sure you've already spoke with Caltrans.
That's a, that's a very, very good point. Dan, I'm glad you brought it up, no, go ahead.
The effervescence on that wall, are you, are you, do you understand what I'm saying? That the wall bleeds, it has a thing, effervescence, which would, I was told it's gonna hurt my paint job, I'm thinking maybe it's gonna hurt your tile. That's the one thing I, my, my, that is a concern, my main concern is traffic through the duration of the project. Because this is, this is the armpit of right, and it's a busy armpit. So we need to take safety into consideration. But I am behind you a thousand percent.
Okay.
Okay.
Thousand will work.
Thank you.
Could you move your microphone a little closer?
Okay, there's a, there's a very good point in all this because a few years ago, Caltrans would have been extremely uncooperative, they would, the artists were, artists were anathema to them, they didn't want to have anything to do with us. Now they're approaching us and, and they've approached me to, to make suggestions in communities that have these perfect storms like you have, you know, a beautiful town that's, you know, cut in two with a terrible eyesore. And they've never been more receptive. Now, talking with the scientists or whatever, the engineers on this thing as far as effervescence and any bleeding and moisture in the wall, you know, that, that may be an issue that we have to address. I mean, we use extremely strong bonding, you know, thin sets that can be as, as wet as you want, I mean, it doesn't really bother them, they'll, they'll stay there forever, even, even underwater. But it, it's ability to hear the wall, and we'd have to sandblast the wall, and there's some technical issues of, you know, getting in there and doing all these, you know, all the, the traffic conditions, you know, management, like you said, very good point also. And then being able to get it all done. So there has to be a, a common will that's kind of stronger than those obstacles because, you know, where there's no guarantee we'll get this one, but if it's, if it's something that this town really wants to do, then you, we just stay at it and go after the next grants. Because another part of this, you know, ideal timing is that Barrio Logan, where our home office is in San Diego, has, has tried to upgrade and the freeway just cut right through our community, our, our church is on one side, the Catholic church and, you know, in a Hispanic community, and it cut it off from the main street, and you've got to go all the way around to the next underpass and stuff. And so this is where the activism is taking place with the Hispanic community and, and the whole deal is about minor, a lot of it is about minorities, but I think that we can get in on that same bandwagon. If we don't get this grant down the road, it, it, there has to be some kind of, of consideration to communities that have suffered as much as this town has with, you know, the division and, you know. So there, there's gonna be political momentum in your favor to be, to make these corrections, but it may take, you know, consistent work on it. And we've, you know, I got the best job in the world, I'm gonna be doing this forever, so, you know, however, you know, however that process goes, we're, we're fine with it.
Thank you, sir.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I, again, I totally salute you and support what you're doing, the only thing that keeps popping into my mind is the idea of that underpass being dangerous in terms of cars coming along and going under it. And so the idea of having, are the children gonna be in there putting stones?
No.
They'll do it at the school?
Absolutely, yeah, another very, very good point. Kids never go to our job sites.
Okay. I believe, that's my.
They are not gonna, they're not gonna be on scaffolding in there. No, what we do is we put it on a cement board that, that, and we cut it into sections, a large, like one of those large trouts would be, you know, like twenty feet long or something, so we'd probably break it into about six or eight sections that are manageable, that we can put in the back of the van and work, do workshops in the school and all the other, you know, any other community events. So, and then afterwards, we put it up and it, it works very good, there's no, there's no exposure that way.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I do, just a quick one here, if this was to happen, what's the potential timeline look like?
Say twenty-six, right? I, I would say that we would run out the clock if we get this grant cycle, we would just, we would do it for two and a half years or whatever, I don't, the deadline is. Yeah, we, we would take advantage of that opportunity because the biggest thing is to, is the, to have a maximum involvement of, of the community.
Just, one more?
Did you, are you done with yours?
That was the question.
And then, do you have any questions, otherwise then I'll rotate, rotate back around.
You just rotate now.
Okay, go ahead.
Does, does the grant, that would include like traffic management, all that?
We would try to get it, we'd try to shoot for the high end of, 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 of the grants, the part in order to be able to include all those things. I frankly don't know exactly, I don't know what the numbers are at this point, I would shoot for probably around eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars probably to do the whole thing over two years. And that would probably take care of those things, but how much to sandblast, what are we gonna run into when we do that? What is the traffic management things? So that's where it has to be kind of a community will thing, and it's something that we all want to do because it's a multi-year project, it's a big one.
If we will it, you can make it work?
Oh, hell yeah.
I love you.
No, 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 we, we're, we're not shy, my background is in large manufacturing and millwork and casinos and I had a factory in Tijuana, in Mexico, Rosarito, two in here, one in Louisville, Kentucky, we ran every Home Depot in the country with our products, we're not shy, we go for it.
Thanks, sir.
We can do it.
Do you have a question?
I just wanted to reiterate that as far as I know, this is the most perfect project, not only do we get the good of public art, but the community gets to be involved and children with its production, this is just an amazing program, thank you for coming at the invitation of our principal, and I really hope to see this come to fruition, let us know how we can help.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Does anybody else have any questions?
So typically, we just do questions from the council and then after this is a general public comment where people can comment and do that, but we're, I, I would encourage you to leave some cards if people have any other questions.
Okay.
But I do, I do have to, I do have to say, it was very funny, I was at the Hotel Diamond in January and I took a photo of your mosaic. That's what I was looking at on my phone is, I was like, actually, I took a photo of it.
So you liked it, okay.
I did like it. So, yeah, we, we do appreciate that, but I think there's general support from the council that will probably put an item on our next agenda for a letter of support and inquire. Do you know who is going to be writing the grant for you on Clean California?
I'm, I'm actually, Maria Totova is our, our executive director out of San Diego and I'll be working with her. And I do a lot of the writing and then she fills in the forms because those things make me dizzy.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think moving forward, I would just be curious, because there is a match for the Clean California grant, so that'll be something that we'll have to talk about, because I can't remember if it's a twenty-five or a fifteen percent match.
Right.
And so just to put it in perspective, twenty-five percent match of eight hundred thousand is about two hundred twelve thousand-ish, a little over, but, yeah, so I, that'll be something we'll have to work out logistics on, but I think we have a general consensus to add this to our next agenda to, to put a formal support in.
Okay.
There it is.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate you so much, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, thank you.
Good job.
We will now move into item number four tonight, and this is our general public comment time, this is the time for anyone to address the council on items that are not on the agenda, to address us on the special presentation that we just heard, or to address us on items on the consent agenda. And those items tonight are item eight A, the check register for April first, twenty twenty-three through April fourteenth, B, library repair contractor authorization, eight C, disposal of surplus items. So you may speak on any of those three items, our special presentation or items not on the agenda, you will have three minutes to speak and we just ask that you state your name and address. And if you are on Zoom, there is a reaction item on the bottom toolbar that you can hit and it can raise your hand and we can call on you to also give you time on Zoom. Note takers? General, general public comment, consent, or the special presentation?
It's, it's public comment, you can talk about anything.
General.
Yes, you can talk about this, yeah, anything not on the agenda, any, you can comment on the special presentation or the consent agenda items.
I have a comment that's not on the agenda, so you see, most of the people here are probably like to make the comments.
Could you just state your name for the record?
I'd like to go to the back of the line for a comment that is not on the agenda.
So this is the time to make that comment.
I just think it would be best if people who want to talk about the presentation, because we just had the presentation, that they go in front of me.
So no one has raised their hand yet, so there's no one who's going to make a comment at this time. So now, so.
You're up, Alex. Damn it, Jim.
So if you, so if you can just state your name.
My name is Alex.
Okay, thank you.
And I have my own timer, so shall we start it now?
Go ahead.
Go for it.
Well, come on, don't ask me for my password.
So I have your timer going, so go ahead. So I have your timer going, so go ahead.
Requires my long password.
Okay.
Um, I really wanted to be at the back of the line. Come on. Come on, password. Oh, come on.
So just a suggestion, Alex, if this is something you're going to share with us, if it's a document or anything, you could just give a general synopsis and then you could forward that to our emails later.
Okay, I got, I got, finally called it up. I got my, my prepared speech. I get my glasses right.
I've stopped your time, but you are at 2:15.
Okay, thank you. Madam President.
There we go.
I thank you for your attention. Council members, I thank you for your time and attention. Very importantly, citizens and friends of Dunsmere, I thank you for your time and attention. I have a timer too, but it's not working. I use it in my time.
Yours doesn't matter.
This will be brief, I promise. I'm a big fan of the English composition in writing textbook, The Elements of Style by Strunk and White, where my main takeaway was and is, keep it short, baby. I'm here today for my own benefit, but also for the benefit of the town of Dunsmere, for the people of Dunsmere. For my benefit, I'd like to say, half the lies they say about me aren't true. I'd like to say, I know the neighborhood and talk is cheap when the story is good and the tales grow taller on down the line. For Dunsmere to thrive, the economic development of Dunsmere, we need to be an open community, an open and inclusive community that welcomes newcomers. Economic development requires that we welcome wealthy people from out of town who come as tourists to our softball tournaments, brewfests and farmers markets. If we are to be successful selling real estate to people who wish to have a second home, vacation cabin in the mountains, or live here year round in their retirement, or if we are an elder who wishes to leave our home to our children who grew up in the big city, we need to be inclusive, not exclusive, to run, not to try to run people out of town. Living here in Dunsmere, as the great, great grandchildren of early pioneers or settlers, does not infer any greater rights than a residential property owner of one day. I have a new acquaintance whose real estate escrow closes on the first of May. Will she feel she has moved into a place where she is an outsider of a high school clique? I certainly hope not, and I hope that most Dunsmere citizens feel the same. I'd like to say about myself that I was fired from my job at the Dunsmere grocery store.
All right, Alex, that's your time. But if you have that typed up for us, you can email it to us and we can read that. So that was your three minutes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alex. Brendan?
Yep. I'm ready. Tim Holt. Madam Mayor and members of the city council, last Thursday, the Dunsmere Library hosted a talk by Stephen Bryant of the Dunsmere Community Resource Center on how his agency promotes food security and physical and mental well-being in our community. Also, this came up. What do they do when a homeless person shows up at the center in the middle of winter when they're with no place to stay when there are currently no homeless shelters in Siskiyou County? Don't have time to go into that, but you can ask Councilman Deutsch, who's at the talk, and tell you all about it. I'd also like to thank Councilman Bryant for his effort at the last council meeting in pushing for the city to find a contractor to fix the library's leaking roof. Judging from the item on the consent calendar this week, it looks as though we may be making some progress on that front, hopefully before the rainy season starts this time. On a positive note, the library has purchased two large signs to help visitors to our town find the library. The library board wants one to be placed right in front of the library and the other placed at the central freeway exit, directing visitors in the direction of downtown and for the library. I've attempted with letters, emails and phone messages to work out a few details on the signs placement with the city manager and the public works department, but so far haven't had any response to any of my messages. Hopefully I'll get a response in time for our next library board meeting this Saturday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other general public comments, comments on the consent agenda or our special presentation?
Peter Art, Peter Art, 5859 Sacramento Avenue. Actually, I wanted to issue a thank you. This is sort of not on the agenda and on the agenda, but for the first time, when you get to that part of the standard agenda that says future agenda items, they actually faithfully reflect those items. And I think it gives a great deal of legitimacy to the overall work that the council is trying to achieve. My only disappointment is I thought from the January meeting that there was sufficient interest in the notion of addressing either our housing shortage or our housing crisis. But it's obvious to everybody that we have hundreds of units in our city that could be housing people of all income levels, but they're shut down and unusable. And I do think there's a significant amount of state grant money and loan money that if we had a vision and if we had a plan, we could be far more aggressive in doing more than just adopting a housing element as we've done in the years before. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other general comments on not on the agenda consent or special?
It's about the tiles under the overpass.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead. Brian Wilson. I think it's a great idea. I think it attracts people to downtown Dunsmere by those tiles, kind of pull people into, you know, instead of just driving through that tunnel, which we all just kind of, it's an empty space. This like grabs you and says, you know what? If that's that cool, what's down the road? And I, I think it's just a real, and it represents what we are in Dunsmere too, the fishing, the rainbow trout, which I'm really fond of. But I think it's just a real, I, I hope council does pursue that. And as far as maintenance, it would be really nice to have an area that you wouldn't have to worry about maintaining constantly because it's a, it's the number one graffiti center of Dunsmere. And I think if it was done right, people, the graffiti would be left alone like the Dunsmere wall and the wall down here on Sacramento.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on general public comment? And again, if you are on Zoom, there is a reaction tab where you can raise your hand. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close general public comment for the evening and move into council and staff member comments. And I'll begin with our city manager, Dustin Reed.
So I'm trying to think what happened since the last two weeks. It's been a blur.
You do also have another item on the agenda.
I know. Yeah, most everything of, most everything I have to say is related to the other, the other item, so.
Did you want to address the public comment related to the library signage?
Yes, we're in the middle of moving public works and that is, we've stopped all maintenance and all other activities until that's completed. So, and I'll give an update on the public works building shortly.
All right. Any updates from the sheriff's office? Yeah, that'd be great. And if you could just pull that microphone close to you, or if you want to stand at the podium, it's your choice.
I'll talk very loudly. So we managed to get 388 contract hours, total calls from service center, self-initiated activity of 178, six total cases, six citations, three which are traffic related, two which were parking, one was a warrant. And then so far this year, we are contracted for 5,280 hours of control time for the fiscal year. And as of today, 4,421 hours have been completed.
Thank you. Any questions for the sheriff's office or city manager? Seeing none, thank you very much. Move into council member comments. We do have a number of items today, so I'm just going to ask that council keep their comments brief so we can get to the items at hand. We'll start on this side with council member Kaiser.
One, who are you going to be?
Hi, my name is. I'm sorry. I was trying not to be more disruptive than I already was.
It's okay.
We've got a couple of things coming up. We got, next weekend is the Rotary Golf Tournament. I believe this weekend is in Weed, the, if you've got kids, you want to go to the park in Weed, they got everything there. Trust me. So the, it's Kids Day in the park at Weed. I, I think that's what it's called. On another note, I see our city moving. I see you guys moving. I know you got your hands full, so I commend you for that. And I just want to say, good job. Brian, you rock, dude. From the snow to everything going on, you're the man.
I'm taking vacation really soon.
They put the right, hey.
So again, we, we want to reduce the back and forth. We do appreciate you and everybody, but please.
And I would just like to take this opportunity to welcome our new owners from the hardware store. Jake and his lovely wife, they're here tonight. I don't know why, but it's good to see you guys. This is loving you. And you guys are doing a really good job on that store, bringing a lot of new items and stuff to the people. You're, you're, you're meeting a demand and I'm impressed. Okay? Other than that, looking forward to Brewfest.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, the most important thing and the most exciting thing is we're really picking up a lot of energy moving towards the April 30th, Sunday, April 30th, 1 to 5 volunteer fair at the community center. And I just got money from the Ford Family Institute for that. They're giving us a thousand dollars to put it on. And so we'll be coming up with, excuse me, mailers through the EDDM program at the post office to everybody next week. I encourage everybody to come and find out all the different ways that you can get involved and volunteer. The only other thing I have is that Caltrans reached out to me. And they want to have our briefing on the projects for I-5 on May 10th from 4 to 6. So I, I have checked with Mike Rodriguez to see if that's available to get that to me, but I'm assuming it is.
You said May 10th?
Yeah.
May 10th?
Yeah, May 10th.
May 10th, 4 to 6.
And so for the public, this is your opportunity to get yourself ready to understand what's going to be going on with all the projects. And this coming summer is going to be kind of crazy. We not only have I-5 going north that we'll be working on, but also the 800-foot ridge. So the whole idea was they originally asked to have a meeting where they just briefed the council here. And I made sure that Valenzuela made sure that they understood that the, the community needs to have a chance to come and understand and talk. So I encourage everyone to have that in their calendar for May 10th. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Clarno.
I'm just adding that to my calendar right now.
Everybody's like, we're going to have a lot of dates tonight for things coming up, so please have your calendars at the ready. So Brian, we don't go back and forth. I'm sorry, we have to wait for public comment. You can catch Bruce at the end. So, Councilmember Clarno.
I know we have a pretty busy agenda, so I'm going to keep this really short, just give a thanks to all the city employees. And one thing I did definitely notice that I'd like to, I don't know if it's just our maintenance schedule, but driving around in a couple of different cities in the counties in Shasta County, roads in Dunsmere seem a lot better than a lot of the other roads around.
Which is a little sad.
I'd like to just give a little shout out for that, so. But other than that, we'll just keep our closings, just that's pretty much all I've got for the day.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Brian?
Ready to move into the items.
Okay. I just have a very brief update on the housing item that was brought up in the public comments. So for those of you who do not know, the city of Dunsmere is currently updating its housing element of the general plan, which is our eight-year plan for addressing housing, homelessness, historic housing preservation, different pieces like that. And we did have an open public comment on that. There, the survey has closed at this point. We did give an update on that, I believe, two meetings ago. And they are currently putting together the first draft, which will then come back for public comment on the goals and programs around that. So I would suggest everybody watching the planning commission schedule for when that comes back. If I hear back from our contractors, Plan West, who is putting that together, we'll get the word out about review for that, that draft. I did talk to our contract planner, Rico Tinsman, as well as Plan West about a housing ad hoc committee to help them. But unfortunately, at this point, we're far enough along in the process that they need to draft the plan. We have a deadline of getting it done by June 15th. Otherwise, we lose our community development block grant funding, which is funding a lot of things. So we have to meet some statutory requirements. But they did say that they will consider it as a program for longevity to do implementation of programs. So we did hear you and I just asked the contractors when the appropriate time to do that is, and that's going to be later in the process. So we do have that ongoing. And by the way, we're good. You don't need to be here anymore.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you know, no, you're good. You guys are busy.
They put me in charge for some reason. I just feel like a jerk keeps stepping in and out. So if you need anything, call us. I'll try to help you.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, so we do have that housing item going along. So we'll move into committee reports. Are there any committee reports for today? And again, please keep them brief if you did have them.
No, I think the only, oh yeah, we do have.
Why do you want it?
Oh, yeah.
I forgot about that one.
Just real quick, loan committee met and we have two projects that are, the committee recommended to go forward with. So that's fantastic news. Nothing else specific to that. Loan committee will come back to this body at a future date. But this is the CDBG micro enterprise for Dunsmere specific program.
Okay. Thank you. And just to let the general public know, that loan committee is private because it involves a lot of business planning and some personal financial information. So that is a completely closed group. None of the council members are on it. But eventually, before those loans are awarded, they do come to a public session for comment. So that's why we're.
Can I, can I, can I talk a little bit about it and kind of brag on that program?
Go ahead.
So that program is, offers up to $20,000 for, what is it? Assets or improvements within businesses here in Dunsmere? And so there's up to, I think our 200,000 is our total allowed. So if we do approve these two at the maximum amount, then there would be still 160,000 left for other additional businesses to apply.
And so if businesses are interested, how can they apply?
They reach out to myself or Blake or Quentin up at SBDC.
All right, thank you very much. So if you have any information, please contact us. We have more money, loans, but still, some money. All right, we'll move into approval of the minutes, which we do.
A quick question on that. We've done loans, very strict loans. We've done grants before that. Are these loans or grants? There's some clarification.
Grants, they're grants.
Okay.
Yeah, not loans.
This particular.
Okay. They are grants.
This one is not a, yeah, not a repayment.
We still have loan programs available, look, for job creation retention. Correct.
Maybe that's something we're going to have Quentin touch on when we get to the economic development workshop.
Sure. That's fun.
And just, just for general public knowledge, council members are excluded from the program.
Correct. All right.
Big eyebrow.
All right. So we'll move through and we do not have any minutes for tonight, so we'll move into our consent agenda item. We have three items, as I stated before, which is our check register for April 1st through the 14th of 2023. A library repair contract authorization, uh, disposal of surplus items. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Or any motion to approve?
I made a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll give it to Councilmember Brian. All right. Any discussion? So this does include the authorization to expend funds, so we will go roll call. And so I will go down the line. Councilmember Chrysler.
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Councilmember Clarnow.
Aye.
Councilmember Brian. And myself as an aye. Consent agenda carries and we'll move on. We have no public hearings tonight. And we'll move into our old business, which will be on our agendas for a number of, uh, meetings until it is somewhat resolved or mainly resolved. And so this is our Public Works building update.
All right. So since the, I don't remember if I went, did we go to, yeah, that was in between meetings. So, uh, since the last meeting, I attended the Parks and Rec Board meeting to discuss with them kind of, kind of the intention with the site. And, um, they are exceptionally excited, I guess, and relatively speaking, yeah, that, uh, you know, we're so willing to work with them and try and get it all figured out. And, uh, um, so we have kind of put everything, um, outside of moving Public Works on hold. And so I even got, I even got Blake and Wendy and Monja all up there this week. We all got dirty and we've, uh, we'll continue. Um, the power is, uh, going to be shut off on Friday and, um, they have, um, requested for demolition next, beginning maybe possibly next week.
Okay.
And so, um.
Could you maybe give just a very brief summary about what is happening, just so that those who have not been aware of what's going on?
Right. So, uh, so the EPA and, uh, the Water Board and California Fish and Wildlife have given a mandate, to, uh, clean up the, um, the rail yard, the North Rail Yard, which, uh, this cleanup will include, uh, approximately 1,700 feet of shoreline restoration, um, which would include the space where our Public Works building is at currently. And so that'll, uh, that'll be approximately 90,000 cubic yards of material to be hauled out. And, um, about two-thirds of that hauled back in, uh, in clean, fresh material. They're going all the way down to bedrock. And, uh, their timeline is, um, supposed to be completed, um, as of December 31st of this year.
And so we're moving ours to the property by the pool.
Correct.
Could you maybe give a little context to that?
Yeah. So, so we kind of sought out all the locations in town that are flat and, uh, could accommodate a building that would meet our, meet our needs and requirements for now and into the future. So our current facility, um, was 5,400 square feet with an awning. And, um, it was built in 1962, I believe. And so we're 60 years into that building. That building is, um, structurally sound. And I mean, if there's anything I would do to it, I'd put in, you know, put new skin, you know, skin it and put a new, uh, steel on the sides and maybe insulate. And that's about all I would do for that. And it would probably last us another 60 years. And so, um, with that thought process in mind, we were trying to look at what would best fit the city. And so we looked in the, um, central, central Dunsmere and the capacity of, you know, being responsive and not wasting a lot of time driving up and down. And so that led us to a couple of sites and ultimately led us back to where the Park and Rec District is currently. And, uh, right to the north side of the pool. And so that is the, that will, uh, look at, uh, taking down a number of buildings in that location, refreshing the area, trying to uplift the aesthetics and bringing kind of a new look to that, you know, hopefully a catalyst to, uh, more improvements to come.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members at this time? Um, I did also attend the Parks District meeting with the city manager and overall the, um, conversation was very positive. Um, I did inform them that we will be having this item at each meeting as we move forward and that they're welcome to come. And that we will, again, when we have any updates, go back to their meetings, um, to make sure that they are involved in the process. But do you have a question before I open public comment?
No, I would.
Okay. Any questions?
Actually, I have one. I know we had talked about this every time it kind of ties into this. We talked about having a joint meeting with Parks and Rec at some point.
I am working on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we are, we're working to coordinate that. So.
All right. Uh, so I'm going to open this for public comment. If you'd like to make a comment on the Public Works building update, you may approach the podium or raise your hand on Zoom. You'll have three minutes.
Okay. Me again. So it, it, this has been quite a process and, and I just want to say thank you to Dustin and the staff for stepping in and just helping the department just get through this. And I, I just, it, it, I haven't been the friendly, moving is hard on everybody, anybody. But to that extent, it was, it was with snow and everything going on, I really admire our staff for stepping in and making my life a lot easier. So thank you guys.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments related to the Public Works building update? Seeing none, we'll move back into discussion with Councilmember Brian.
I'd just like to say, uh, this has been kind of an ongoing issue. I know staff's been, um, working on it, uh, but there's so many other things going on. Um, I, I think it might be appropriate of council where to refer the financing of said building to the finance committee, start looking at that side of it. Options or stuff like that. We'll bring it up casually, but if we needed that direction, I think that might be appropriate.
Yeah, I think we're getting close to a final number at least.
Yeah.
We'll need serious funding very soon.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to work through a few things right now, but I, you know, my, I, Blake and I have been discussing it quite a bit at, because we're in kind of budget mode as well. And so, uh, it has come up a number of times to like, yes. But I, I, I had to give them a deadline. We have a legal obligation to move out. And so that's kind of what this week has turned into. So I will definitely bring that forward. But Blake and I have been discussing it in depth and, uh, each day as we move forward. So I will be sure to bring that forward.
Yeah, we're ready. I have just said probably finance committee and then good recommendation.
Yes.
Any other discussion? I think.
I, I, I really want to help, but my, my numbers didn't come up on the Powerball, you know?
Well, I, I appreciate it.
Seeing no other discussion, thank you so much. Again, this will be a standing item, so if you want to keep going on with that one, um, you are welcome to be here. 11A Senate Bill One project list.
This is me, huh?
That is you.
Sweet. Okay. So this is a yearly, uh, request. So we need to have a resolution passed by city council for SB1, Senate Bill One, which is funding for streets and roads projects only. And so the main reason for this is to gather public input. And so, um, this is the time to, to get that. Uh, I've talked with Public Works Supervisor and, um, the, the current project that you'll see on the, in the packet is crack seal, which is some kind of cool sealing thing that goes in cracks that helps roads maintain. Uh, further than that, you may need to get a specialist to find out exactly what that all entails. But, um, those are the projects. You've got certain areas there. Um, I believe that's it in that regard.
Could you maybe, how much money are we getting this year?
Should be on there. It should be in the resolution. There you go.
Maybe just to set an expectation to the general public that it's not enough to do a new road.
Right.
Well, to be clear, that's the next fiscal year, so it starts July.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we get it in monthly installments. So it's, take 42,000, divide it by 12, we can get that each, each month.
And then SB1, if I am remembering correctly, is linked to the gas tax, correct?
You got it. Exactly right. Yep. This is all gas. So what you pay at the pumps, um, helps this fund.
Sorry. Quick question. I, I know that we reimburse some snow buying expenses, something tied, you know, to funding tied to the gas tax. Is that?
That is a separate.
Whole separate fund. Yeah. So anything that's snow related gets charged to a separate whole fund and then we get reimbursed half of that amount in base form.
Is there any way that this could be used or, um, Shasta Avenue coming up from the Pine Street there?
If it is a street or a road purpose, go for it. If it's a street or a road purpose, it can be used.
We need a new road. Shasta needs a new.
It is like brutal going up that hill, you know, a block every single block.
Yep. Yep. They just could definitely use for that. I don't know if we can get a hole in the road with it all, but it.
It's from all the repairs on the water. We've had, I don't know, 15 repairs on that one section since I've been on council.
So being back to it, we're just questions right now. We'll go to public comment and then we'll come back and talk about it. Um, we understand that roads are not the most easy to maintain.
Yeah.
Um, and they cost a lot of money. And this is $42,000.
Yeah, I understand that road is not, that's concrete, I guess. So that's the problem. It's not your normal, um, asphalt that you put down. That's why it would be so expensive to fix it, but I just had it.
All right. Any other questions? All right. We'll open this for public comment. Would anyone like to comment on the Senate Bill One project list, um, for roadway expenditures from the gas tax?
Uh, Peter Art, I pretty much live down on the corner. And if you look out the window at Cedar Avenue, um, I, I think the, the mega issue is $42,000 a year. We will never keep our roads in good repair as a four-seasoned community. And so also does that go with sidewalks? Our sidewalks are in terrible shape. And it seems to me that for the big picture, whether Public Works already does an inventory of the worst first or not. But if you look at the subsidence on Cedar Street, uh, next to my peach trees, the street is subsided by about four feet. There's a very old masonry wall, but if the street were to collapse, if the wall were to collapse, and there's cracks in the street where really you can't see the bottom of the crack. So the notion of sealing, uh, really is kind of silly. It tends to last a couple of months. So for the precious dollars you, you have, you're sort of wasting them rather than really dealing, having started with the water infrastructure and the sewer infrastructure, now the city is to streets and roads and sidewalks. But the passive approach of we got 42,000, we can't do anything. I don't think it serves the community well. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, if anyone on Zoom would like to make a comment, just use that reaction button. Any other comments on the SB1 project? All right. Oh, go ahead.
Alex, I'd just like to say I noticed the wall, uh, along the river is, uh, right at the wall. Looks like it's getting undermined. So maybe a big old rock, plop, dropped in the spot or something. That's going to be an expensive fix.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And, uh, Councilmember Chrysler, would you like to continue your thought from earlier?
Excuse me. I, uh, I'm ready to make a motion when.
Is there any?
One quick, uh, question here, uh, on how these next two items interplay with each other in terms of the things that are getting fixed in here. Are they items that have been pointed out in the active transportation plans we're having people comment on?
Yes. I will get to that. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I, I will just, in regards to the public comments, I understand 42,000 isn't a lot, but we do have a project. Just received the final plan suspects today for Apple, Branstadter and Hope that is coming forward. And so that will, uh, hopefully go to bed here shortly.
Thank you. Maybe that's something we could.
Branstadter and Hope. Okay.
Yeah.
And so could you maybe explain those projects a little bit?
So it's essentially, uh, I mean, we've been working on it for a while, but it's essentially an overlay for, for those three streets. If you've been up on Upper Hope, there's a giant, I guess you'd call it a, not quite a cavity, but almost. I mean, the, the asphalt was too, we took it off over the winter when the frost heaved or something like that. And, uh, so that road is pretty much disintegrated and the bottom end of Branstadter is pretty rough right at, um, right at Dunsmere Avenue. And then Hope is just.
Is that through step, the state transportation improvement program?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And so that, that is, uh, that is coming forward. Uh, hopefully, hopefully we'll put it out to bid here in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. So that's, so construction would start this, this season.
Yeah. Construction's just like.
All right. Any other, it looks like we have no other comments. If you'd like to proceed.
Sure. Uh, I moved to adopt resolution number 2023. Uh, I got XX, 23XX. Is there a number there?
I don't, I don't have one at the moment. I don't know if Wendy's had.
Six.
What?
Zero six.
Zero six? Thank you, Miss Wendy. I moved to adopt resolution number 2023 dash zero six to adopt a project list to receive SB funding in FY fiscal year 2023, '24 by title only.
Is there a second?
I'll sign it.
Uh, signed by Councilmember Clarnow. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention.
Wait, wait, Madam Mayor. Is this a roll call vote?
No.
No.
It's one that we have. Passes. Thank you. All right. Uh, we'll move into our next item, which is the Active Transportation Plan update. And then we will move into our Economic Development Workshop, um, which may have some overlaps to it, but I'm going to keep mine brief. Um, so we have the second, uh, advisory committee meeting for the Active Transportation Plan. And for those of you who are not familiar with the program, it is a state program that Caltrans puts together where it supports, uh, non-motorized vehicular travel. And so it supports pedestrian, ADA, cycling, scooters. And actually, at some point, they have kind of put micro mobility, so electric scooters and bikes in there as well. So there is that type of motorized, um, vehicle, but it's, uh, meant to focus on infrastructure that is not for cars, basically, single occupancy cars. And so we are working with CivicWell and KTUA is our contractor. And they are putting together an active transportation plan that would make us eligible for more funds from the state of California under their active transportation program. So this is again, another way that we can fund sidewalk improvements, curbs, um, trails, uh, crossing safety. And so I just wanted to make everybody aware, um, we do have a couple of events coming up that we want public input on. Um, so we do have a website right, right now that is open. And I'm wondering if our finance director could pull it up and show, um, the general public really quick. But if you have your calendars out, we will be holding a community workshop. It's going to be a charrette-style visioning, uh, workshop. And that is going to be on Friday, June 15th, from 4:00 PM until 8:00 PM here in the city council chambers. We will have food and beverages. Families and children are highly encouraged. Cause again, most of the people who are walking around in our, uh, community are going to be kids and our older population who may not be driving as much.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, the date?
Can you confirm that date? Cause the 15th is not a.
It's not a Friday.
That would be the 16th.
The 16th. Okay. I will let the.
There's also the 15th.
Oh, so we have the 15th.
There are some local, some, there are some things on the 15th, but that's more for, um, specific groups.
Okay.
Than on like the Friday, Saturday of railroad days.
Okay. Yes. It's basically going to be during railroad days. Um, I will let them know that it says Friday, June 15th. I did not catch that on our, our flyer, which has not gone out yet. Um, but that is a workshop that'll be going on during. And they'll also be doing pop-up events at the farmer's market, railroad days and several other special events throughout the community. So we do have this lovely website that we have a survey open right now for general, uh, public comment. And then we also have an interactive map. So if you go to the community map here, this is basically where you could report roadway issues, cycling issues, bus stop transit requests. And, uh, this is, uh, available and open right now, so you can take a look. Some people have already started putting pins in here, um, but you can see the colorful pins at the bottom. And those are points of interest that you'd like to see more transportation around, traffic issues. And then we do have another option. So you can go in and leave comments wherever you would like throughout the city that you think that needs to be addressed. So if you want to click on one of the icons, Blake.
Which one is that?
Anyone. All right. So obviously you can see that people are putting public comments, high slope. Um, ADA may be very difficult. So we're looking for all of this input from members of the public. This information is available on the city's website. And as I said before, there's a, a number of flyers, uh, at City Hall. Um, I believe we've posted on our, uh, on our Facebook page as well. And then here's the generic survey that is also open right now for public input. We took a look at some preliminary, uh, information at the, um, advisory group and it's going really, really well as we watch, uh, Blake fill out his. Um, so we're just really encouraging people to get that input in. Um, if you don't plan it, uh, if you don't come and say it now, we can't plan for you. Um, so just please continue to, uh, go onto this website, give us your information. And then, um, obviously look for us at all of the community events this summer. And so again, this is going to be K2, KTUA and CivicWell. So they'll have a number of public outreach items. Any questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The one thing that I'm, when I think about this, that really kind of stumps me is how can we, as a city with, uh, old streets and narrow streets and all of that, open ourselves up to bikes and all of that? I'm just kind of starting off the process, wondering if that's really feasible for us. What's your thoughts?
Actually, the, um, traffic engineers from KTUA were very excited how narrow our streets are because there's a number of different types of infrastructure that we can go into. And when we think about traditional roads, we think curb, gutter, sidewalk, road, um, potentially a vegetative buffer, you know, some grass or something. But that's not the only type of road that exists. So if you think of older European cities, there are a lot of solutions within those that would still match here where we may not necessarily have a lifted sidewalk, curb and gutter. Um, but he was actually really excited. We took a tour. Uh, our first advisory meeting was a tour of town in a number of problematic areas in North and South Dunsmere. Um, and they were very excited that there are some things that we can offer. Um, obviously, one of the biggest things that we will have to balance and it is, um, included in our survey is parking. Obviously, there are, um, trade-offs. You know, would you rather have parking or would you have a wider sidewalk? Would you want to have these certain things? And so they do have some questions in there in the survey to weight what the community's interest is. And so, um, we're kind of doing that exploration piece now. And so that's why we're looking for this. The other cool thing is they have, they did do an existing conditions mapping. And so, uh, you can see here where we have crosswalks, where we're missing sidewalk, where we have river access in different pieces. where we have river access in different pieces. So we have all of that information on here now. And so that'll be part of the final plan is where we're going to be addressing those things. As you can see, we don't have a lot of sidewalk. And ADA ADA compliance is going to be a very unique challenge for us. But again, there's just a lot of room for improvement, and there's a lot of opportunity to do some really cool techniques and different treatments for the road. And so I really highly encourage everyone to do this. If you want to give some public input tonight, this is recorded. We're going to share it with our consultants. But we really hope that you engage us with those other engagement events that we have open as well as the online portal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope that I can speak tonight.
I mean, how do they get around all those old cities in Europe? So are there any questions before I open public comment? Seeing none, would anyone like to give any public comment on the Active Transportation Plan update?
This is cool. Alan Fleischer, Oak Street, things working on my street. This is cool. I ran across the Dunsmere website last night. And it's really cool. We have the volunteer fair coming up. And I've been talking to Bruce about how it's a great opportunity for us to give visibility for stuff people may not have discovered yet. So it'd be really cool to have a table representing Dunsmere where people are saying, hey, here's the website, here's the things you can find out on the website. Here's a cool thing we want your feedback for. Because a lot of people don't know, a lot of people aren't cruising the website like I was last night. They're not cruising Facebook. And this is too cool to leave behind, let it get lost. So maybe Bruce, you can relate it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments for tonight? And again, if you're on Zoom, just go to reactions and raise your hand. All right.
Did anybody notice the Volkswagen banner on his shirt as he came to speak in the transportation row?
And there, so the Active Transportation Plan doesn't focus a lot on transit, but we are asking some transit questions as well. So if you are interested in bus services, here's a lovely project timeline as well. So if you want to know when other items are coming up, they will be posted here. So we're looking to have a draft plan at the end of August that we can put out to the community as well with different treatments and what people ask for and move forward. So we're very excited for the project. It is funded through a grant. I can't remember which one we went and got, but Civic Well.
Sustainable Communities.
Yeah, we're not paying for it technically. Your tiny, tiny portion of your tax, state tax dollars go to that. So thank you guys so much for giving me the time and thank you for the general public. And let's move on to our super fun event for the evening, which is economic development. Did you have a quick question before I moved to that?
Is there any action on this?
No, it was just an update.
Thank you for your efforts on this.
Thank you. I want your input. And I will be annoying and I will talk about it a lot and I will ask for it constantly. All right, thank you guys so much. We'll move into our last new business today, which is kind of going to be our longer one, which is our Economic Development Workshop. And so to give context to the city council and to the members of the public, the purpose of this is to kind of start the conversation around economic development, around our tourism industry, business attraction retention.
Five-minute recess?
Oh, do you want to do a five-minute recess?
Please.
Are you guys okay? Okay, we're going to do a five-minute recess really quick. So we will come back at seven nineteen. Okay, sorry. We are, we, we're cruising. I know, well, we meant before Michael, myself.
Is this? Are you doing this slide? Okay.
No.
It's like six slides, is that right?
Yeah.
It's like. You're sharing it now? No.
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 Yes.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Six.
You have to.
Sorry, did you say that too? I'm trying to. I'm just meeting with all the advisors and basically, I don't know, employees in the building. Supposed to meet with the leaders.
Which would you?
They would leave the downtown, just be writing in the downtown. I'm sorry, Charlie. There's good interviews, but this is who we are. I think I've set up a little.
Yeah.
We can move. We might invite her to. Do some of the.
Yeah, exactly.
I want to. So we're. Community, a lot of the. These is the. That's the whole.
No. I know.
For ten.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well.
So. Someone did, he did this. So we sat. Like chatting with. And then. It's been the. So.
Yeah.
And so. So we started with the.
I know.
And then we have enough doing. Yeah. So we have to get it. After. So it is. Your. So, okay.
They're going to get you a car?
I like. I mapped out. She was. General. So. This one is.
And I got it. I repriced it. I like these things. I like this stuff.
And to start, because you have to do the. The.
Negotiating.
This.
I will say, when I talk classes in the grand school, I got student evaluations and the thing that I got hit on the most is my handwriting.
I took a one credit course in college on how to write for teachers. And basically, we learned how to write on my course. It was a Tuesday morning class.
He looks like he's ready to go to bingo. You ever seen those things? We got all the dovers and all different colors.
Actually, if you guys want to come over here and use this one, I just want to make sure.
Welcome to the party.
Are you ready, Wendy? All right, we'll now come back into session at 7:23 PM. And we will open into the Economic Development Workshop. And so again, just to give people some background of what we are attempting to do here is this is the first of a couple different sessions we're going to have with the city council where we want to develop a two to three year economic development strategy to better focus our efforts around economic development. And so we have today the Siskiyou Economic Development Council. We have Quinton Gaddy and Alia, and they're going to be helping us in the beginning of this. And then at the end, I have some time for Cheryl Petty at the Chamber to talk a little bit about what the Chamber is doing. If you would like, it's up to you, or you can nominate someone else to talk about what's going on with you guys as well. So I'm going to hand it off and you guys can take it away.
One quick thing, and we have Kit Marshall, who's on the board of the EDC too.
Yes, yes, one of our, one of our standing board members is here. So good evening, everyone. My name is Quinton Gaddy. A lot of familiar faces in here. I'm the director of the Shasta Cascades Small Business Development Center. Oversees Siskiyou, Shasta, and Trinity Counties. And I'm the director for business development at Siskiyou Economic Development based in Waireka. Talking about the timing of all this, this works out really, really well. Blake, you can go to the next slide. We have a MOU, a memorandum of understanding to perform economic development services for the, on behalf of the city of Dunsmere. And that five-year contract is ending on June 30th. And so we will be renewing that. And so we're actually really, really glad that the city is engaged at this level and wants to develop some concrete, you know, goals for, for the city. And so the purpose of this meeting is to discuss, you know, what the community wants to see in terms of, in terms of economic development and business development. And when we talk about economic development, what we're really talking about is bringing in investments inside this community. So that can look like a business moving and opening shop downtown. It can look at a business expanding and adding jobs. It creates wealth, it creates prosperity. And so what we want to do is we want to be strategic and align a lot of the different projects that the city is already engaging in, whether it's the trails work or expansion in tourism, and align that with the economic development strategy. So we're not all doing things siloed off separate from each other. So that's more comprehensive. Blake, you can go to the next one. So right now, we do a handful of things. Some of them are disconnected, some of them are a little more connected, but they include, you know, as, as mentioned earlier, you know, the micro enterprise assistance program in the city of Dunsmere. I'll speak to Matt Bryan's point on, on business loans. Previously, the city of Dunsmere had what was called a revolving loan fund for business assistance. This is where payments from existing loans would recapitalize the fund, which would then go out to new loans. The California Department of Housing and Community Development disallowed RLFs in, in a few years ago. So you can still have loan funds and you can still use program income in those loan funds, but they can't just be an open revolving program. They have to be in a contracted grant agreement that has a fixed period, performance period with fixed national objectives. So that's something we can move to in the future, but we currently do not have. Currently, what we just have is, is assistance for micro enterprises, which are businesses with five or fewer employees, including the owner. So that does not include our larger employers here in the city of Dunsmere. We also include Discover Siskiyou, which is a tourism business improvement district. And so all the lodging properties in Siskiyou County collect a T-Bid in addition to COT. All these T-Bid dollars get centralized through Discover Siskiyou, which lend us a lot of external marketing. So this is, this is marketing that's targeted to folks in the Bay Area, to folks in Oregon, to folks in Sacramento, to get them to come to visit Siskiyou, to stay in our lodging facilities, eat in our restaurants, to ski at our ski parks, et cetera. We work in brownfields. This is primarily where, where Alia's work is at. And what brownfields are, are old buildings, former mill sites, sites that may be contaminated that we want to clean up and reintegrate into the inventory of, of assets. So the most common one to think of would be like the old landing mill site in Mount Shasta. It used to be the Roseburg Mill. It's now been cleaned up and it's ready for development, for example. We have Siskiyou Farm Co., which includes, you know, like Salt and Saber is on it. It's an online marketplace for Siskiyou-based food producers to sell all their food on and pick up in free locations each week. And then we're working a lot on, on working landscapes and how that pulls together a lot of our different agriculture producers and how we deal with things like the threats of climate change and wildfires in particular. So we can move to the next one, please. So our purpose of being here today is to look at, you know, what are the priorities of the city in terms of community development and how we align those with economic development. And so we'd be looking at things in terms of energy. Increasingly more housing than, than before, housing has become an issue for economic development. We typically did, you know, we were downstream from it. That's no longer the case. It includes infrastructure for tourism and for destination planning. Next slide, Blake. And so we've been working with the city staff and with council members to just do some preliminary identification of priorities in the city of Dunsmere. So far, you know, some things that have come up are infrastructure to support more people coming into the community. You know, things that would support a higher population, things that include more retail options, things to do in the historic downtown in particular, a lot of the trail development work and stuff that can be improved. A lot of people, you know, who, who go to a certain fall, they have to, you know, they have technically trespass to get there, for example. But we also have, you know, some other assets to explore and things that include the, the airport that Dunsmere has. The fact that it's, like, when you walk down here and you see the history, you, you, you get the sense, you feel it. People who are from out of town, it's something we want to capitalize on. The concentration of food, Dunsmere does tend to excel in this. It has, you know, quite a few different food establishments for, for being a much smaller place. I, I live in Edna. We've got free options, for example. And then energy, hydro, and hydrogen, you know, the amount of natural resources that the city has, particularly water, you know, are, are great assets. And so there's not going to be like, it's going to be a fairly loose structure, but we're going to be doing a lot of spitballing and brainstorming on, on what you as community members want to see as business owners, what you want to see as council members, what you want to see, and ultimately how we as the Economic Development Council can help move towards those goals. A lot of our work before, especially throughout COVID, had been kind of sporadic and organic that, oh, we saw a need, okay, let's develop a micro enterprise program. Oh, we talked to this consultant on, on retail and, and hey, let's go after a grant for downtown revitalization. There wasn't a substantial amount of planning that went into it. It was a lot of sporadic. So what we're fixing to do here is to get some structure and some clear attainable goals to work for in the next few years. These are some other priorities that we have. The big elephant in the room, vacant buildings, underutilized buildings that are just sitting there and gathering dust, you know. We can't ignore that and, and how that unfortunately depresses values across the neighborhood. We have to be able to address that. And it's, it's, it can be an uncomfortable topic for a lot of people, but it's, it's a reality. And there are some other things that we can, you know, double in on. There's a huge need for lawn care services downtown. We hear that from a lot of folks and there's lots of potential funding avenues for that. RV parking as well. And then going back to the active transportation plan accessibility. You know, ADA compliance is really, really hard in a lot of these buildings. Going up a lot of these, a lot of these sidewalks, some buildings don't even have ADA accessible bathrooms, so they can't have customers come in. It can only, you know, be a storefront in game only. So given all of that and everything that we have, we're going to just, you know, figure out sort of a stepping stone to building a strategy. We're not going to have that hammered out tonight, but we're going to at least identify this is what the community wants to see. This is what we can attainably and feasibly do. It's nice to set, you know, realistic expectations on, on a lot of these projects so we can at least continue to make progress towards them and then identify, you know, some sort of prioritization amongst them. And so with that, like I said, we don't have a loose structure. I guess we just open, open the floor.
Yep. So we'll open up some public comment right now to hear from the members in the room. And then we'll come back to the council members if you'd like to comment on those priorities or if there are other priorities you'd like to see. So, and again, if you are on Zoom, go to the reaction tab and you can raise your hand and it'll put you up into the queue and Wendy will take a look at what you've got going on. But if anyone would like to make any comments? No? Okay.
You know, I've been snooping around trying to figure out people. It's been interesting. I've talked to you guys a number of times about communicating vision for Dunsmere. Because what I'm finding is that there's two different sets of people here. Some people want Dunsmere left just the way it is. They want communication to happen the way it's always happened. And then there's a new set of people who want to come in and more progressively move towards a healthier city with vibrant economy. And the two don't go hand in hand. So if you're thinking about a strategy, you have to think about city culture. Some people say, I don't want tourists in my town. But I think the future of Dunsmere is probably tourism because I don't know what else we have, right?
Right.
The irony of it is I'm having a discussion with my neighbor who didn't want kids playing in my backyard because she wants a retirement community. And I'm like, kids are health. So we have a, we have people who want to retire. They want it quiet, put up a gate, call it a gated community. Then we have people who want schools and kids and new growth. And so again, it comes back to vision. Talking to my neighbor, it became really clear, I was sad when La Perla, the original La Perla closed. It was really good food. And talking to my neighbor, she goes, what we need is we need more people to open up businesses. And I said, talked about La Perla. She goes, I never went there because I couldn't afford it. So Mike, who owns Jack's, only services I-5. He doesn't serve Dunsmere because people here can't go spend 18 bucks on a hamburger.
Twenty-nine.
So there's this weird situation of can we do economic development that our residents can afford? Because our median income is about 30,000, I think.
Like 32 something?
Yeah, and so, you know, God bless Becon Bakery, you know. Randy and Erin are doing an awesome job down there because you can get a coffee and a pastry. It's quality and it's affordable. That's fantastic. So what can we do strategically that allows us not only meet the needs of tourism, but to come in with money? Because they have a vacation budget. Along with the people who live here who have no salary. I have friends who have no internet, no cellphone. Well, I've never lived in a town where I've seen people living right at the edge. I've dealt with homeless services and it's really clear when somebody's homeless. But we have people housed here who need economy too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else you'd like to come up and make a comment? I think affordability is a really good point. No?
Are we like, kind of brainstorm ideas or?
Yeah, if you have ideas, go ahead.
Wow.
Yep.
Okay. Mott Airport. One idea I have, there's a YouTuber named Tucker Gott. He's on YouTube, travels around the country, flies on the big paragliders. He's got the lawnmower engine on his back and a big propeller. That would be a neat to have a fly-in, like an Oshkosh kind of fly-in of paragliders. This guy's really popular. Could bring a lot of tourists to town, could bring up a whole bunch of beautiful, colorful, the wings flying around the sky. Airplanes would have to stay away for a while. There's lots of issues. It's just an idea I'm throwing out there for the Mott Airport. It's kind of neat because Tucker Gott rhymes with Mott. We could say Tucker Gott at Mott. He's a famous guy. He's got a big, he's a big name. He's like a, an all-star of the paragliders. Check out his YouTube sometime. It's pretty cool, Tucker Gott. Second idea. Hedge Creek Falls. How to make that work, how to raise money, how to pay for the porta potties that's got to be there, how to pay for staff to pick up trash, how to, you know, do all the work that you got to do, how to bring in some money. Parking, parking garage. We got a guy in town, I won't mention his names, that made, made a lot of money in parking in San Francisco. What if we put up a solar panel over the top of that parking area next to, right at the, at the parking area at the Hedge Creek? And then collected three bucks, four bucks, I don't know the number, but some dollars to park your car underneath this solar panel there. So that would be the income is, is parking, you know, pay to park and walk down to the, to the falls, come back up. There's not a lot of space to turn around. I talked to this guy who made a lot of money in San Francisco with parking garages. He says, ah, there's not enough room to park. It's kind of hard to have a gate. But I don't know, maybe it could be worked out, maybe not. I don't know. I'm just tossing out ideas. So I'll leave it at that, two ideas.
Right on.
Thank you. Anyone else online would like to take a stab? Again, this is kind of an open exploratory section. One of the deliverables that we will bring back to council is this input and maybe some suggestions for adopting goals. So today is just very free form and open for that comment. I mean, if we can keep them timely, if you can be very timely, I will be, I will be loose for this item. I have been commented that I'm a little rigid.
Everybody knows that that corridor where Reacts is and where Cave Springs is and where the old nursery store is and where the old barrage is are all I-5 front. And I'm really curious what the new Cave Springs owners are planning as they acquire the adjacent properties. Because now you've got people coming off the freeway with that whole section. And what are we doing to get them from that section downtown?
Thank you. All right.
Oh, go ahead. Hi, I think that the Hedge Creek Falls is an amazing spot. Where you went with that just now. I go, yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. If you have a little kiosk or something up there in the summer, you can't believe how, I mean, I know you know this, but the cars just are endlessly parked, parked, parked. And I think, are they just driving on or are they hanging out? Are they coming down here? Are they, have they gone through here and now they're up there? I think the potential of, I want to say everything from a hot dog stand to whatever, you know, the city could, could create there. I think the idea of a tourist, you know, connection where people could get documents and things to go and the map, the walking tour, whatever it is, I think that would be amazing. It seems like almost a lost place right there just because there are so many people there all summer long. It's amazing. And all winter too, actually.
Thank you. All right, last call. Any other comments and then we'll circle the council and we'll, we'll continue on. All right, I'm going to start over on the side. Council member Claire, no anything you'd like to throw out at this point? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Mark Rowley, hi. Go ahead, Mark. Hi.
Hi. Hey, I just wanted to throw in a quick two cents. I'm, I'm a bit of a broken record, but I will just keep going with it. Kind of in the West, Roger Brooks of Destination Development, he's written a book called 25 Immutable Rules of Successful Tourism. One of the main items that he discusses for small community turnarounds is he often says that in small towns, you can't necessarily look to the locals to provide the new jobs and business startups. So I would advocate that maybe we ought to look to see if we can find some spots for some businesses and see if we can't get some real small micro business startups for just maybe six or seven months during the summer months, even, even if they just have limited inventory. Again, I'm Mark Rowley from Mossbury Hotel. Something that we notice multiple times a day and on the weekends, many, many, many times, is travelers will come in, park their car for a moment, do a quick little walk and then jump back in their car and go because they've determined that there isn't anything for them to do or see. We all know different than that, but we, we need to do a better job of filling the storefronts. If we can't embed ourselves in a lot of the existing closed businesses, we maybe have to get creative and figure out a way that we can help some of our neighbors get into business, even if it's just for a limited time and season. This is a very common European technique and it proves to be quite successful for a lot of small old town districts in Europe. And I do think it could work in Dunsmere also. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Can I comment real quick?
Yeah.
One thing that I would like to, project that's currently underway right now that, that holds directly into what Mr. Rowley just said is the city of Dunsmere did just close an R and B on April 14th for a, is to hire a firm to develop a downtown revitalization and specifically a retail recruitment strategy, but then also implementation. And so we currently have received four responses from highly qualified firms. So we will be going through with the city and, and selecting a contractor to develop that strategy. But as a big component of that is we, we specifically wrote in it that to kick off that project, we'll, we'll do a community-facing workshop much like we're doing right here. And so Mr. Rowley, I would encourage you when we, when we do get a contractor selected, to please bring those specific details on, on that strategy and on, on getting those folks in there, even if it's temporarily for that period of time. I'm also very, you know, delighted about the upcoming broadband improvements that are being, you said in July.
Yeah.
I think those are going to be a, a real, real game changer, especially if you have, you know. I think if a Dunsmere local business pusher in particular, they're based, they're based out of the wheelhouse and it's a really, really small team, it's only four or five people, but they, they produce really, really compelling content. And it, it's really, really high quality and they're very high-level professional firm located here. You know, if, if we have those amenities available downtown, just given the natural attraction and beauty of the area, I don't see why you couldn't attract some of these little boutique tech firms to come up and, and, and open shop downtown. So a lot of times you can think of, you know, downtown retail and, you know, maybe being a candy shop or a shoe store or whatever, but we can think broadly about filling those spaces. But I think we all agree that we want those spaces filled. So, so thank you, Mr. Rowley.
All right, I'm just going to go around really quick to the council members and then we'll continue. So I'll, I'll start with Councilmember Claire, no, if you have any comments?
Yeah, I just had one question for you and then a quick comment. Brownfields, did I hear you say that includes standing buildings that are just empty and dilapidated? Or is it just open?
Timber mills and stuff, big places, right?
No, it can be.
No.
They can be standing structures as well. So yeah, old mill sites, old gas stations, old structures, usually containing lead and asbestos contamination. But there can be other types of contamination, like underground storage tanks or other types of things, so.
Thank you for the clarification on that. And then the comment I'd like to make since we were talking about Hedge Creek is when I, when I was working at the brewery during the summer, there was a large portion of the people who would come through and have lunch there were out of town and they just come to visit Mossbury or Hedge Creek or sometimes both. That being said, I do think we really should develop the offerings that are out those places to help drive people down into downtown. I know at Hedge Creek, I just walked there actually a couple days ago. And there's that notice board that has nothing on it. It'd be great to see some advertisement that, bringing people down here. And then, yeah, same thing around Mossbury. More of that idea.
Councilmember Brian?
I don't know where to begin on, on this. I think it's fair to say that one of our greatest assets is that we have I-5 going up and down. It's done a lot to harm our town when it went in and bypass us, but it's an opportunity. I heard as many as 55,000 cars a day pass on it. I think kind of two general issues. If we can get the smallest percentage of that, you know, population to stop here and spend a few dollars, that'll transform the economy of the town and make it a very prosperous place. But if they happen to come off the freeway, we need to have enough things for them to see, do, experience. I know it's a struggle to be in small business and I've been to a lot of small business owners here. And a lot of them, it's just them working it and if they need to take time off, the business closes. But I love the thoughts I heard tonight about being more sensitive to a tourist season. And I'd love to see more coordination so that we always have, you know, not just the one or two, you know, stores that are always open downtown. But maybe we have a goal amongst all the business owners to be open, you know, let's have 10 open on any given day so that there's that mix to keep things interesting. I've also talked to a lot of people who've stayed in town, some of them at Mossbury or elsewhere. And they loved it, but they felt like they saw the town in a day because, you know, maybe there was one restaurant open that day. If it happened to be a town on a Tuesday, they'd go from place to place to place. So I would love to see more organization among the current people involved. And I also think, you know, there's a lot of people in the younger council members here, age group, who are right at the point where it'd be wonderful to start a small business. You know, you have just enough experience to maybe be able to be wise enough to navigate that, put it together. I have a college roommate who left San Diego recently, where he's from. He's really good at baking. I tried to get him to come up here and do a bakery, but it was too difficult to navigate and imagine that. So he ended up leaving the state because it's too expensive down there. But I do feel as if, if we can find a way to get the word out that we're not only business friendly and hey, we'll let you open a business, we're not the most intuitive place for a big corporation to come in and say, hey, large population, let's come in here, put this business, we'll make X number of dollars because everything all works. But I do feel like what we have is a lot of underutilized beautiful buildings and spaces. And a lot of them need some capital to fix up, to be usable. Say someone wanted to open a, someone was talking to me about a barber shop the other day. It probably would take about maybe 15, 20,000 to convert a space into something to be usable that way. And I know that monies are available for them to do that. But do they have the education, knowledge, motivation to put together a business plan, go to the next steps? I've always kind of hoped for some sort of like packet where somebody was even remotely interested. You know, boom, here's, you know, something easy to, I don't know, like market ourselves as a place you can come and open a business. And granted, most of our businesses, I think, will be, you know, just people owning their jobs. But that's not a bad life when you're in the home of the best water on earth. And it's that quality of life that makes people want to be here. For the longest time, they haven't been able to figure out how to make a living. I know Giuliana did a book, economic presentation for us some years ago.
Forever ago.
Yeah, but retail was surprisingly a major, I guess, absence in our town. It makes sense. You know, we've got the hardware store, we've got Dollar General, some lesser extent, maybe the grocery store, that sort of retail item. And they do a great job for what we have. But there's not a lot of places where people can spend money except for things on food. So I think integrating, integrating outdoor recreation, art is really important. You know, I think if we have enough of that, we'll reach a critical mass. And it'll just be an amazing place to walk down and you'll, you'll go help yourself to spend money if you're able to, to spend money. I am sensitive to the affordability, but, you know, I think some of the, you know, most economically disadvantaged people make a living off of these jobs in tourism. They have less means or training, say, to get a job online where they're making, you know, fairly good money for this area remotely. So I think that, you know, the rising tide will help, you know, raise all boats together on that. And it's just, it's been a long time since we've been a boomtown. And we won't be that again, you know, crazy one, but there's no reason we can't build a service-based economy. You know, it's a symbiotic, sustainable. Sorry, I think a lot about this. It's near and dear to my heart. And I'm really excited we're having this workshop.
Over to Councilmember Pissler, speaking of people who own their own businesses.
These two guys kind of nailed it on the head. I'm excited to see what happens. That's, that's all I got to say. I'm, I'm, I'm excited for the future. I think things are about to change. I think things are about to change. So I'm good.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Thank you. Few things. First of all, one of the things that I'm encouraged by, and I've been looking for this to happen for a while. I know the Chamber has finally. Taken on the lead to come up with a folder that goes out to new businesses coming into town. And I think that's been a really good move forward. You know, the whole idea is that if you get somebody here, you want to make sure they succeed after they've gone through the investment of coming. So I think one of the things we need to have in our strategy is how do we retain as much as how do we get new people here? Secondly, when I was putting together the information for the unmet needs for the bus system. Jason Young, who I know is on the line. Introduced me to a whole bunch of figures that I think would be really interesting for the council and the public to have some information on. Which is all of the numbers that we can get from, I forget what the system is, that show how many visitors.
Baser.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I really think that's something that would help us understand a better, what is happening in our ecosystem here? People coming, how many, where are they from, et cetera, kind of builds into what you've been talking about there. And I think that would be something really good for us. And then and then finally, this is the big one in my mind. I've been, I was the liaison for the Chamber for a bunch of years. And one of the things that really struck me was the the whole idea of money for marketing. And you know, what it comes down to is is that the Chamber turns around and logically says, you know, we need to do the marketing for the city for economic development. And then it turns around to come from the council in terms of community development money. And it really makes more sense that since you've got Discover Siskiyou, which is getting all the money from T bid. And since you have all of the knowledge of how best to market things, how to use the tools best. That rather than have Dunsmere or any of the other cities try to figure that all out and come up with their own plan for marketing and come up with their own money. It just seems logical that if Discover Siskiyou were to to take the lead on advertising our events. Not so much giving us money to put the events on, but simply to handle the marketing of it. I think it'd be a lot more efficient and it would also take some of the stress off of both the council here and our budget and the Chamber and their budget. So I think that's something I've been waiting for for a long time. And it's not asking to give money because if you're talking about putting bed, heads and beds for the lodges, it's right up the alley. So that's my big thing and I really hope somewhere we can get to. Where we talk about marketing from a standpoint where we have professionals doing it instead of us and spending our own money. Thank you.
On that topic, do you, would you be open to sharing your your comments that we were talking about in terms of events from a person with children perspective?
Yeah, so I I've been writing a long list here of of. Things that, so I'll kind of start from the top, but I'll I'll start with that. So one of the challenges, so I've been here just, well, eight months this weekend and. It's the biggest challenge we have is trying to find. Things for our kids to do. They don't show up on any calendars. They they're just like randomly pop up on Facebook, but it's like. Three or four days before the event. There's no centralized system. That people are able to report that to, like whether it goes through the Chamber and then to Discover Siskiyou. And so what ends up happening, so when I'm looking in Halloween timeframe or fall and I want to go take them to a pumpkin patch or something like that. I end up leaving the county, you know. I don't want to necessarily leave the county. I don't want to drive three hours. I want to stay. I want to stay local. I want to be able to be home and and do things. And so the biggest challenge we've had from the kid's standpoint. Is that there's a lot of kids, you know, in Siskiyou County, but there's not a centralized way for us to find activities. And those kind of things that are going to keep us here and prevent us from going to Ashland and Reading and Medford and Klamath Falls or whatever. You know, you know, if we want to do something outside of, you know, just going to school and being part of school events and sports events, so. There's a lot more activities and art classes and stuff like that. And my kids are involved in theater. And so there's just a number of those things that my wife just randomly found on Facebook. But there wasn't a centralized location for us to find them. And so kind of, kind of on this, I'm gonna dump on the centralized thought process. I think one of the, one of the challenges that I, that could help us, well, two things. So we have a. It's mentioned, we have a number, a large number of empty spaces. But what we don't have is a centralized way for our property owners in downtown to market those spaces. In in a collaborative way, like, like, so we got, so say there's five empty spaces. Okay, well, if if SEDC and Discover Siskiyou kind of work together, they're like, hey, let's, let's figure out how to fill these spaces. Because we get retail, we get those heads and beds, we get that money. Let's, the retail component of it is, you know, we know that our community can't support all of it, but if we're able to. Start getting some of those activities, you know, then we get our vacant homes filled, then we get all of that stuff. So if there's a centralized way for, you know, I I drive through, I drive from here through Weed and Mount Shasta. Multiple times a week and and I see. Mount Shasta is kind of starting to get those spaces filled, but then if you're looking for a commercial space, there's no, I mean, good luck, right? You gotta know a Realtor and then they may not even know all of the commercial spaces. It's like you drive by and like, oh, that property is open. Who's the owner of that? I don't know. Then you gotta do your research, right? And so if there's a way for us to get, go and get an inventory, here's the square footage of every single building in downtown. And when they become available, that property owner can say, hey, it's available, let's market it. And let's help market it, you know. So that kind of, that kind of component is a centralized thing. But as as we're, I'm kind of gonna go back to the top of my list. So I think we we mentioned Hedge Creek Falls. You know, as we are looking to go after the, you know, the Mossbury component at Hedge Creek. And and then I'm realizing as you walk around and we did, we didn't really talk a lot about. About it a lot in active transportation, but it was mentioned wayfinding signage. If we have a centralized theme throughout the community on wayfinding signage, then we could do that. You know, I've seen that in a lot of the, a lot of communities that do do that, that are tourism, you know, have a tourism focus and trying to. Capture that. It it's really effective. You can have that on the bike trails, you have it. And it and it takes a while and it's kind of expensive, but it might be something we could get a grant for. I, a while back, I thought about something, theme focused for tourism. So. I think of, was it Fort Collins, Colorado? And so they, they did a very strong focus on microbreweries. And they got this, they started growing the number of microbreweries and now it's become a destination in. To come to throughout Western Wyoming, Colorado, Kansas, Nebraska. Everybody's like, oh, I'm I'm gonna stop there and they go do the microbrewery tour or whatever they call it, you know. So maybe if we looked at some kind of. Theme that makes us more, that makes us unique. We have a great, you know, art district. But then how do we augment that with something else that that kind of keeps them here? And, you know, if they. Maybe drink a little too much, then they go down to the hotel and they, you know, spend the night, right? And so kind of that kind of focus, like taking Brew Fest to the next level.
Can I just add three cities to that list too, that have similar theme or that have themes? For research purposes, if anyone wants to look into them, is Murphys, California for wine.
Yep, yep.
Leavenworth, Washington, the German theme. And then even looking closer, Jacksonville with the Brit Festival.
Yeah.
Close Jacksonville has a very nice historic district. They take very good care of it and it's very well planned.
I just wanted to build on that.
No, that's, that's exactly why we're talking about this. And, you know, and we mentioned earlier when we talked about, well, I mean, our very first presentation, right? You know. What we didn't emphasize already is the murals that we already have, right? We have the giant one down here in downtown and then we got the, the beautiful one over there. On Sacramento Avenue. And so maybe more finding the rest of the walls and let's paint all those too, right? And then one of the things I've realized as, as I've bought of a camper of my own and then my, my, my dad lives in one. Six months out of the year, RV parks are a very high demand, very limited supply in Siskiyou County. Basically, they're booked out from now all the way through November. And they're, they're seventy-five dollars a night for a stall. I mean, we're getting, if they're inside our city limits, we're getting ten percent of that and the T bid's getting two percent. So how do we expand on that, you know, and thinking about outside the box? Do we, you know, one of the things I thought about is, you know, like the old. The unused, underutilized Little League ball field. Do we reconvert that into something like an RV park? And so we could. No?
There are legal aspects to the whole thing.
I I understand. It's recreation. I've read it.
I I'm pretty sure we might need to leave the ball field.
Good, but.
There are certain things that have very strong cultural and historic value to a lot of people.
Well, we need, it's very underutilized in any capacity.
Yeah.
One of the other ones was, there is no, there's only one place to, or two places in Siskiyou County to publicly dump your RV. And that's Pilot in Weed and then another one up in. Up in Wyrica. And so there's, there's a need for that. If you're driving down the interstate, then how do we get them to stop here? Well. Well, get a camper to stop here. They're gonna stop, they're gonna, they might eat lunch in their camper or they might stop at one of our restaurants. So. That's something that we could do as a city and it's not too expensive. We're looking into that. One of the things we talked about was how do we, how do we have other activities, like maybe like a mini golf or something like that, that's not just fun for kids and families, but, you know, if. Like you said, he's, he said, everybody, they're like, I saw the whole place in a day. Well. How do you just keep them here for a day and a little bit? Because that's all you need is just that one night and and to get them to stay the night. And so. Those are the things I thought of so far.
Thank you.
Can I comment on one thing, just a big thought? So is, when you said wayfinder in particular, and so I'm thinking about like. What you would call some tourism infrastructure and how that can align with a lot of things that are already going on. And so I went to grad school in Japan and there are a lot of cities where you would go. And there would be either a sign or a placard in the, in the sidewalk and it would have a QR code. And you would scan that, you would be added on to the city's free public wifi and then you would be taken to a visitor homepage. And this was synonymous across different blocks, at different, at different waypoints. So you could think at the Hedge Creek Falls, you know, for example, where you could have one. Where someone could scan it and and it would also allow local businesses to advertise on that front page. Whether they had dining specials, coupons for meals and things like that. So if you look at, you know, the public wifi that's coming downtown. And if you look at the need to redirect people downtown and you say, oh, you know, if we were to get a grant and we're actually to build something, you know, that could be one thing, you know, like a specific. You know, cohesive signage, wayfinding system that has a built. Physical aspect, but also has that virtual cyber aspect online. And you can pair the two and then you can also tie in, you know, if I scan this and say, oh, we've got an event coming up, you know, Railroad Days is a week away. You know, for example, things like that. Gives you a lot of flexibility. You can tie that back to the city homepage. So it is just an idea that popped up.
Long Beach, Long Beach has that. When we went down for a conference, you're walking a couple of blocks to the conference hall and everybody had that code. They told you everything about the building when it was built, the events coming up. And it was kind of cool. So that's a killer idea right there.
Okay, we're gonna be very quick and close this up so you guys can finish because it is past eight o'clock and I'm cognizant of time. The only two items that I had is affordable daycare.
Yes.
One of the items that comes up with the pool a lot is the people love the pool because they can drop their kids off for several hours and there's someone watching them. So it becomes the de facto daycare in the summer. And so that that is a very, I mean, especially for talking about our, our families who are disadvantaged. Who are lower income, who are struggling to get by daycare, affordable or free daycare is is essential. And then in terms of the other thing, we don't really have any office space for contractors, so I will work from home sometimes for Wyrica. And I will just basically go to the wheelhouse and post up in a corner because they have wifi and I can get coffee and people leave me alone for the most part. But it would be really nice to have a couple of more spaces that cater to people who may be in town, who are, want to stay here for three or four weeks. And instead of sitting in their Airbnb or, you know, going to their hotel, want to go somewhere else. I was just in Philadelphia for over a week. And I ended up finding a couple of little, like free little office spaces or like it was five bucks for, you know, a little spot. And I was able to hold a couple of meetings there. It's really helpful. And could be something for people in the summer to advertise as well as that you could just post up and and be that. But we have one, one, two more. Very quick, very quick.
Couple more. I'd love us to focus on the outdoor recreation. We're kind of the first stop in, you know, the general Siskiyou County area. I feel like we don't have too many businesses, if I can think of any.
For what?
Specifically.
Outdoor rec.
Ted, well Ted Faye and the hardware store, you all have aspects to pay completely that way, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I do feel like there's been a lot of advancements in the way we interact with our outdoor recreation and a lot of business opportunity there. TCT. You know, obviously something that we could cater to a little more, as talked about. I'd also like us to, if we could, potentially increase the education in our community with residents that are here around how to get into business. It's a constant, you know, issue where someone maybe opened a business but doesn't have a good business plan yet. And that was the difference. Between getting good, good financing or not, or getting the rental. I wonder if we could offer a course or contest with our high school seniors where they come up with business plans. Maybe someone will later on do it or, you know, we could have a prize.
Hitch Fest.
You know, business plan. I'd love to look into and be involved with that.
One more and then Dustin. Okay, Dustin.
I wanted to add on to Juliana's and about the spaces. So in, where was that? So when I was in, when I was in Minnesota, my, my previous mayor, he, he bought commercial buildings and he only rented individual spaces. And so, but then also when I was in Iowa, we did, we, we were, had a. One of the guys on the Economic Development Board, he had a, had a space that was for entrepreneurs, but now, now with the whole COVID thing, we have. You know, we have people that work from home that maybe don't always want to work from home. And so if, if there's kind of an incubator kind of thing that. SEDC could, could like bring forward. And I can mention a couple downtown larger footprints of about fifteen thousand square feet. That would be prime for shared office space, but also maybe rentable office space for that, you know. Individual that is just starting out and they need away from their kids so they can focus on their business clients. Those are the kind of things that, you know, will help, help drive that economy.
Thank you. So I want to make sure we have enough time because we also want to have Cheryl have a little bit of time to talk about what the Chamber's got going on. I know you had some information you still had to go through. Is that something you want to do at a future meeting or is there anything else you want to cover today?
Which specific?
Oh, I just saw you had like MOU overview on one of your slides.
Oh, I mean, it's just, it's just good timing that we're doing the renewal and we're gonna have MOU and there's actually like some teeth to it, like this is what we're actually fixing to accomplish here.
Yeah.
Before it was just kind of like.
We do things.
Big, we do stuff, exactly. So I like, I like direction.
To use all this marker.
Yeah. So I think what we can do is we can probably put that on the next meeting and then continue the conversation with the MOU and and get our minds around that and and kind of do that. So I appreciate you guys. But I I want to make sure, did we hit everything for you guys?
Um, yeah, I will say real quick, Ford family super interested in 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 funding for childcare and and we very much view that as an economic justice issue. We are really trying to prioritize that. It is, it, it, it's, it's, it literally eats away, you're like, if you're thinking GDP. Lack of childcare like eats away like five to eight percent of that GDP. It just takes people out of the workforce that would otherwise be in it. So it's that, that one is huge for us.
And after school programs, because being around a lot of people who have children, I do not, I have animals. Which are my children. And being around a lot of people who have kids, I don't understand how people do it because the schools don't have consistent scheduling anymore. It it's really difficult. So after school as well.
I'll answer it. I was, I was a kid who grew up in Siskiyou. I played at that ballpark. We got in trouble.
Yeah.
We walked up and down the streets and did who knows what, but we weren't doing productive, good things.
Set your limitations, bro.
Thank you. Oh, the only other two businesses that we do need that weren't up there is a pharmacy and a bank. We don't have a pharmacy and a bank.
Give us a bank, yeah.
And a bank.
I just wanted to say, I know you also wanted to discuss a brownfield strategy, so maybe that's something we could do more in depth. I don't know if that's something you and I would talk about or.
Yeah.
Would be a council discussion, but I'd love to talk more about that program because there's a lot of opportunity there.
Yeah, I think as Councilmember Claireno had pointed out, I think if we were to, so just to point it out, Wyrica has hosted the Brownfield Grant as the grantee. For a number of different cities to do environmental assessments and cleanup. They're now looking to not do that program. And I had talked to Aliyah, I said, if we could shift the program away from vacant land to improving businesses and buildings. There's a lot of businesses that need a lot of help. This building, we can't use a majority of it because it's asbestos ridden. And even residential possibly, if that's something we can do. So, yeah. if that's something we can do. So yeah, we can touch base on that and maybe bring something back specifically for that. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
So I'm going to invite Cheryl up and, uh, if you'd like to give an update on. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll scan those and get those for you all. Thank you. So come on up.
Cheryl's too shy.
Hi. Not that shy. I would say, um, Cheryl Petty, the notorious.
Da, 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 da.
So, um, what we're notorious about is there's a lot going on at the Chamber right now. And I just want to share with you some of the things that are, um, coming right up. The Volunteer Fair, uh, is on the 30th. So that's like just about a week away. We've had tremendous response from the community for this activity. Uh, not so much from the organizations because it's new and they didn't really understand what we were asking of them. But our community wants to volunteer and they want to know a way that they can do that. Right after that, on May 2nd, at the brewery, at 8:30 in the morning, we are sponsoring a business roundtable and all the businesses are invited to this. We're getting RSVPs. I'll tell you that this is something that Dustin challenged me with, uh, on a couple of different occasions. We had a restaurant roundtable, uh, several weeks ago and got nine restaurant owners to come at eight o'clock in the morning. Um, I'm amazed at the response in the community for these things that we put together kind of quickly. But, um, and then, uh, May 16th, we're having another mixer. So we're just like, you know, and then after that comes Railroad Days, dah, 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 dah. So, um, there's a lot of things going on. I've heard you talk about some things that we're doing at the Chamber right now actively, uh, the signage at Hedge Creek and then that little, uh, broken sign there by the, I don't even know how to, uh, describe where it is. But, um.
On that little stretch past Dunsmere and the sweets.
Yeah.
You know, a tree fell on it. Yeah. Okay. So, um.
The wedge.
We actually have paid a deposit to a sign contractor in Reading. And these things are going forward. We've applied for various grants to pay for this and we're very optimistic that we're going to get something come through. Um, my personal project that I started talking about last year was a brand marketing strategy for Dunsmere. And, um, what that means is you don't focus on the individual events. Instead you focus on the overarching, uh, values that people can find here that match their values. That's how it works. It's a kind of a subtle psychological approach that you have to know your demographic well enough to know what they're looking for. And then you put yourself out there as that thing. So we have a slogan called, "Discover Dunsmere, Your Entertainment Destination." So we kind of copied from Discover Siskiyou. I liked the way that was, but alliteration is better with Dunsmere. And it's pointing out to everyone that we have a lot of live entertainment in Dunsmere and not other places. So, uh, we have a, we made a group page for live entertainment in Dunsmere on Facebook. We responded to another business owner's, uh, difficulty to find good help. And we have made another group on Facebook called Dunsmere Jobs to support our members every way that we can. And, uh, thank you very much for inviting me. I'm really, um, excited about the mood around here about tourism. For the first time, we have a city manager that understands the tourism issue and is giving leadership from the top. That we can all, um, take heart and join together and make this a better place for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question? Cheryl, you said it was, uh, um, the 10th at 8:30 at the brewery?
Which thing? There's two things.
The business meeting.
May 2nd.
May 2nd, okay.
Okay. It's the Business Roundtable. And, um, you know, we're kind of doing a lot of things for the first time, but, um, we're being successful at appealing to our members. Probably be coffee or whatever, you know?
Right on.
And, uh, then on the 16th is a mixer, which is, you know, we're trying to get more members. We have 54 members now.
Where's the mixer at?
It's going to be at the brewery too. So Aaron is really coming out. He's painting his place. He's fixing it up. He's acting enthusiastic and I'm really happy to see this because it's been kind of depressing. Uh, you know, he's just really been affected by the COVID and David Clarno, uh, situation there. So I'm happy to see him excited and doing things. And it's going to catch on. We're going to get a lot of people doing things in this town, uh, just by making a list and going and calling them. Okay?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Cheryl.
The notorious CP.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone, for this item. Uh, we will follow up with a number of different pieces, including the MOU and then coming back with an actual strategy that we'll take additional input on and most likely approve, hopefully. Um, I would hopefully want to have this strategy. So I'm going to move us into item number 12, which is future agenda items. So here we've listed some of the future agenda items that we are looking to place on the agendas. These will not all go on the next agenda. Um, we do have snow removal policy scheduled for the next agenda and the citizen member pursuer ad hoc committee. Um, and then again, we will continue to have the public works, uh, building. Are there items that are not on the future agenda item?
I had two more that I remembered. Um, one of them is we have the housing element coming forward and then also the rezoning ordinance.
Yes.
At some point.
I would like to, uh, kind of solidify the idea of moving towards this landing page. I know we've talked, but I just would like to have it so that we primarily are ready with the QR code. Um, I think the most important thing is, is we get ready to go with our hotspots. We want to have all the businesses have a QR code where they can sign up, all the restaurants on their menus have the same thing. So I think that's a key item is to get ahead of it.
Okay. Any, any other future agenda items? All right. Seeing.
Wait.
Okay.
There, I, I, I do have an announcement that I forgot. It's kind of important. On the 29th, it's called Dive In. You can get a dinner at the community building for like 20 bucks. And all the money goes to the pool, lifeguards, training, all that. It's a good thing. Come out, get a dinner. You can get them to go or you can get them there.
Was that May 20th, you said?
29th.
No, the 29th, Saturday, next Saturday, 29th. I believe it's at five or six o'clock.
April 29th. And what was that time again? I apologize.
I think it's five o'clock.
Five, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's, 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 it's for our pool. Please come out and support our pool. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Dave, to clarify, you're, the one on May 10th was the Caltrans project.
Yeah, that, I had that.
Okay.
May 10th and I wrote 10th, but I thought she said 10th, but it's the second is the business brewery and then the 16th is the mixer.
Got a busy month.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Any other items?
I make a motion we adjourn.
All right. Second?
I'll second.
All right. All in the affairs, please signify as saying aye. All right.
Thank you, everybody for coming.
Thank you.